...as educators during this COVID-19 pandemic. With the increasing positive cases in Lincoln County, it is important that thoughtful and informed decisions are made. Every day we walk into our classrooms, we wonder which students will be there. Some students may have come back after 10 to 14 days of quarantine, while others are starting their quarantine periods. Currently, most teachers are having to deliver both in-person instruction to students in our classroom, and then additional virtual instruction must also be provided. Because of this, it is very difficult to keep track of the instruction that students have had and to evaluate and plan future learning. We are not able to instruct at the appropriate level, given the unpredictability of how many students are in person. Learning virtually are not available for instruction at all. A significant amount of time is spent preparing schoolwork for students who are quarantined. Emails, phone calls with parents, learning new technology needed for virtual instruction, and helping families navigate these uncertain times are all additional tasks in our day. What we are doing is not sustainable, and we hope to receive help tonight from the Board of Education. Having time without instructional responsibilities during the school week, such as having for an in-person teaching week with one day being dedicated to virtual learning, would be helpful. Teachers would then have time to address and plan for the additional COVID-related tasks that we are now having to do. Whatever decision you make regarding a change in our day-to-day schedule, I would ask that it would be made in a timely manner with plenty of notice so that a smooth transition for students, staff, and families can be made. Thank you for your time considering this matter. If you have further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our board recognition. Tonight, we would like to start by recognizing Nikki Davis, who is writing a grant to the Meemee Foundation for the metal drum, or on metal drums used in the classroom. As you can imagine, her classroom resonates with the glorious sounds of the islands. At this time, Nikki, are you here? So we will provide that. A round of applause for Nikki. Our next board recognition this evening is for Sheila Doosin, who is a career professional at Chuckerson Elementary School, taking on the difficult task of monitoring students for illness symptoms, including those associated with COVID-19. She forms great relationships with all students, offers ideas for school growth, and steps up whenever it is needed. Sheila, were you able to make it this evening? Otherwise, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize her with a round of applause.
Yes, I'm on here.
She's on virtually. Thank you. Next on our recognition this evening is Kristi Nowinski, who is a school guidance counselor at both Jefferson and Washington Elementary Schools. Kristi continues to reach out to students and families throughout the summer to check in on their social-emotional needs. She's always willing to help any family, find the resources to support their families. She supports students' mental health through one-on-one check-ins and whole group lessons. She helps regularly with student supervision, always stepping up to support different projects around the school to continue to build our school climate and culture. Kristi, were you able to join us in person or virtually tonight? I think Kristi is on virtually, so... Thank you, Kristi.
Yes, I am. Thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Last but certainly not least tonight, the board would like to recognize and thank Christine Edder, Stevie Cogseem, and Trina Lutske, who submitted and secured a $500 grant for Maple Grove from Aftermath's paid forward education grant in honor of Dr. Dawn. Dawn, if you would come up here with Christine this evening, and Trina, that would be wonderful.
It's always interesting when I get people who have a phone call and anyone who's in schools knows that we still get a lot of spam. We get lots of emails, a lot of products we push our way. I almost dumped this one because it said "Aftermath", and I'm thinking "Aftermath"? Oh, another educational product. And it turns out that this is actually the hazard cleanup crew that comes in after murders, fires, and that type of thing. So it was completely unexpected. And when I was talking with the gentleman, I really thanked him for reaching out to the school and giving the opportunity to have that connection. So it's really kind of a good thing for them. But it's still...
Yeah, one of the reasons that we worked to acknowledge her was for the teachers and staff to know that the extra above and beyond that the teachers and staff have had to go through. And there's sort of so many testimonies that really talk about what I've done and with the students and the teachers and staff on just during the COVID-19 pandemic. You're appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Kevin, if I may, I also have kind of a secret surprise until now of recognition. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards recognizes Kevin Blake for demonstrating a high level of commitment to Wisconsin Public School students by participating in WISB professional development opportunities. And so this is your award for Level Two. At this time, I'd like to invite up to the microphone our students' board representatives or their report, Levi and Amelia.
While many students are sad that fall sports are coming to an end, they are happy that they were able to participate this year. And all of our sports have had shorter seasons, but many of them have done well and been able to compete despite lots of less, very much less practice. We will even be signing runner Elizabeth Schmidt, a junior, to save the Supercross Country after her first place at conference. And while it might seem a little bit early, seniors have started to work on scholarships for their after-graduation plans. This would include the PAXA and other non-government scholarships. This PAXA just opened for students this month, and the NCC tonight has helped students navigate this process on the 21st, as well as a step-by-step video. And while our local scholarship night is on January 20th, students are reminded that there are multiple others, like the Berthold Scholarship, that the deadline's coming up very fast. And just like the fall sports, marching band was also affected this year. And while they had drastic field practices, no parades, and only one away competition, the band did very well. They were able to pull off a fall show entitled "El Matador de la Rosa", which was a Latvian show that told the story about the bullfight. The band had lots of fun, and they were very glad that they could do what they wanted.
The first quarter is ending fast, and it ends this Friday, the 30th. And although school may have gotten off to a rocky start in the beginning with quarantines and missing people, many teachers and students alike seem to have found the rhythm and gotten used to the new normal that this school year has presented us with. There are many versions of in-school learning that have developed over this quarter, such as high-run, full-virtual, and full-physically-in-school every day. Another thing that is coming fast is the AP signup deadline, which is the 30th. This year, the price was raised by $1 to come to a total of $86. The past days are being made fourth through the 12th. And a nice feature this year is that because of all of the uncertainty with COVID, the AP exam is not charging any fees if a student decides to not take their exam or cancel the exam. Another fun thing this week, on October 30th, is the Halloween dress-up. That students can participate in, and they can participate in a costume contest and win a prize for costumes with the best incorporation of a face mask, less duo, most realistic, and if 2020 was a costume.
Before you guys take off, a thank you for your reports. I just want to make sure none of our board members had any questions for either Levi or Amelia. All right, thank you for the updates. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative report section of our agenda tonight. Dr. Sample.
Thanks, Kevin. The first report comes to us from curriculum director Glenda Ojenski. It's the topic summary report that was covered at the last CTP meeting. It was a shortened CTP, and a lot of time was dedicated to sharing the results of recent benchmark assessment, task bridge. And so you can see each one of the building reports are there for each student, monitoring the report for the fall. With the exception of Pine River, they will test and get benchmark assessment data beginning in the winter. Glenda is here. If you have any questions for myself or Glenda regarding these reports. Next report is the summer school report. That too was mentioned and briefly discussed at the CTP meeting by Alex Maschek. His annual report is present. You'll notice our numbers were down a little bit, mainly and in part for the pool being closed due to COVID and the pandemic. So he's got a pretty detailed, thoroughly detailed report here. If you have any questions, I can answer those, or there's others of us that can too regarding summer school. The annual and cumulative separation data. It's a nice way of saying retirements and resignations. Eddie tracks those from his HR office. He's included his report. We've seen the data before, and this is a compilation of all of the data with ratings and categorical responses, as well as multi-year turnover data, so you can see how we compared last year to the years prior. Eddie is here tonight, so if you have any questions for myself and Eddie, we'd be happy to answer those.
I also have a question until next year. If the board has any specific questions they'd like to see asked next year, please contact our samples or I and let us know so we can be sure to include it if it will forward to us, which is on the topic summary sheet at the bottom.
Yeah, and what we will do is if there's anything else that you want to be included between now and next year, we'll include that. So that's primarily... If you want to see anything different or the report in a different format, we'll make sure we prepare it next year in a different format. So that's the format for this year.
I'm asking that I should ask those questions next year?
Right, next, next year. Yeah, you can ask anytime that you'd like.
Thank you.
The next report comes to us from Jill Seaman, Pine River School Young Learners Monthly Data and Enrollment Report, and it also gives the numbers for the meals for our students. Are there any questions for myself or Jill regarding her monthly report? Karen Baker's provided the third Friday enrolling. She's got those numbers and that data in her topic summary sheet. Karen is present as well. If you have any questions regarding the third Friday count, she's provided the previous year's counts, as well as this past third Friday. Karen also has the COVID-19 data reporting. You can see on her topic summary sheet, she has linked the COVID-19 dashboard, which is also on our website. COVID-19 reporting, we just had a meeting, in fact, today, is on a weekly basis at least. And so if you have any questions about how COVID-19 is reporting, that would be a great time to ask. And then later on in my report, I also include a link that shows the numbers that Karen has been working closely with Lincoln County Health Department in order to track those numbers of not only students and staff testing positive, but students and staff that are quarantined because of contact tracing. So if you have any questions at all, you can ask Karen or myself at this time as well. The review of the county truancy plan is short and sweet because the county truancy plan is temporarily suspended due to COVID-19. You can see the report that was compiled and the explanation at the bottom. "As of September 2020, there are zero Merrill High School students under a dispositional order, which is good news, due to COVID-19 pandemic and the cancellation of all truancy hearings until further notice." Any questions regarding this report, John?
Yeah. My question's probably going to make this long and bitter instead of short and sweet, but the lack of truancy hearings is a decision made by the county. And I was wondering if a representative from the high school can tell us how many students would be considered truant right now if it was a normal school year?
Here goes Shannon.
Karen. As of this morning, we sort of went through our ethnis reporting this morning, and we have 12 students that would be considered very, very capable truants. So it would be very potential to truant that are all. We have probably a number that's closer to the total of 24, 25, who would be required by statute. So there's truancy issues.
So I guess in your opinion, since it's here and it's... I kind of want to have this discussion so it goes on the record as we refer to historical point in education, and we are basically allowing 25 students to be truant from compulsory education because we're not pursuing truancy at the county level. What type of practice are they going to have on graduation rates in the next couple of years? Yeah, and I'm assuming this is only for the high school.
That's correct.
And it's only... We've only been in school for 40 days.
Yeah. So I think it's safe to say that certainly for those students that aren't coming, they have to be very much educated. I would say that it's a personal issue.
Ryan, do you have anything in regards to middle school?
We're at the same boat with students that work in that 10 to 20 range about making contact with families, not getting very far with a few of them, which is obviously frustrating, but we've certainly made numerous attempts. But it goes all the way to us physically going to their homes. We've done that on several occasions with Officer Hethardt and a couple of students by myself and my counselors. So we're making attempts, and the staff, obviously, they're letting us know. We're trying to track. The kids are in that area for the future. So we traditionally have a process for letters, and we do that same as the high school. And there's certainly going to be a number that may not be at that age right now.
Thank you for the information. Just to summarize, what I heard is that there's about 42 students in our district right now that would be pursued for truancy violations if this was not a COVID and if the county would enforce the truancy laws.
Correct. And that's with our teachers and administration, but our teachers taking attendance for those virtually attending as well. And they track that very closely, so we do have those students that would still be virtual or not physically person truant. Since we have nothing to report for the quarterly out-of-state travel report, the next two items belong to Brian Dasher. He's prepared the monthly status report, as well as the quarterly summary of purchases between $5,000 and $9,999. Anything in either one of those reports, Brian Dasher is here, excuse me, to answer any questions? Next report is a summary of Eddie's report from Human Resources. He's created a bar graph that shows MAPS time off by type. We have since entered new categories related to COVID. And so you can see not only the absences, but the absences by type, as well as the unfilled absences for teachers, aides, and secretaries, which is a direct result of our substitute teacher pool at this time. Are there any questions for Eddie or myself regarding his report? Next is my superintendent's report. I've included the events on my calendar for the month. And the athletic trainer under contract for sporting events was a topic brought up by Glenda Engley for a future board discussion, so we can discuss this tonight. I found the best... Tammy's absence and with everything else that's on our agenda, this seemed like the best fit for it. And so I included... I worked with John Miller to include an explanation of how we got to this point, where we're at, and where we'd like to go in the future. So essentially, to summarize what you're seeing there is we have partnered with Merrill PT. They do not charge us for any of their services. Trying to make a long story short, Merrill PT did a contract with a person, Dakota, and Dakota was working with Merrill PT to provide us coverage for our events. Because of COVID and the furlough of Dakota, Merrill PT continues to cover our events at no cost, but they also have a little behind-the-scenes perk in the fact that they get referrals to their agency. Dakota did a wonderful job, outstanding job for us, so we were sad to see him go as a representative of Merrill PT. And now he is inquired as to what would the bidding process be for him to be retained in order to provide services. He is estimated that he could provide the services that we were used to at the rate of $20,000, although that is... and that's annual, although that's not official. And so you can see at the bottom of the report, "We appreciate the past and current services provided by Merrill PT and Anthony Gerlock. However, I recommend we put our athletic training services out to bid in order to ensure that we are providing the best possible care and attention to the health and safety of our students." And that's a pure reflection on the job that Dakota Russ did when he was providing services with us through Merrill PT. So with... This does not need approval. I believe that that's the next best step, and then let the board decide based on services. It's not going to be... It's not comparing apples to apples as far as this one is lesser cost than the other. It's what kind of services can we get and what are we willing to spend for those services in this case? This past month, I've been busy with the administrative rounding. Long story...
That's okay. You can't see me over here, for example. Just a quick question. So I guess what that's getting at is that we're going to put that contract out to bid. We're not cutting off the contract with Merrill PT for Dakota Russ. We're just going to go through the process of putting it out to bid.
That's correct, and that will be for next year. And so we have a lot of time to be able to make sure we've got all the information needed to go through that process for next year.
Okay, thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Would you like to follow the question, right?
Actually, it's just a thought. Thank you for putting us all together. We've got a lot of information here in this history, and I appreciate that. So it was easier to understand if all the things were on the PT all that came to you. So I appreciate the time and effort that you put into this.
You're welcome. And John Miller also assisted as well. He was very instrumental in this.
Oh, yes, thank you. Are all bids being considered then? At that point, it would be... It's not just the person mentioned in the letter and Merrill PT. Would it be anybody that would like to bid?
Correct. We'll open it up completely. Yes. You can see the administrative rounding. I did this past month. I'm going to run with each... Go through the process of rounding with each administrator quarterly. The administrator evaluation progress is obviously very heavy at the beginning with goal setting, so you can see the evaluation process and the progress towards that. My building staff visibility is also indicated using my handy-dandy app. Central office meeting agendas and those topics. And then the... Another new feature this year that I've added to my report is for the board to see the weekly bulletins that watch the staff every Friday. So we've got links to those, and I'll continue to include those as well. Are there any other questions regarding any portion of my report? Okay. Okay, Kevin.
All right, thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda is committee reports. First on the order tonight would be the Finance HR Committee. We had the draft minutes attached from the October 14th meeting. The committee chair, John Smith, and the rest of the committee are available for questions. Does anyone have questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? All right. The next committee would be the CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee. We did have the draft minutes attached from the October 14th committee meeting. We have all paid. The chair and other members of the committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions this evening for our CTP committee members? All right, thank you. Under the category of unfinished business, we currently do not have any, so we'll move right into the board of education business. Our first item on the agenda under that category is the 2020-2021 revised budget and levy certification with an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend the motion to approve the revised 2020-2021 budget revision that is presented and to set the property tax level at $11,427,198.
Motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Mr. Dasher, if you can come up to one of the microphones, please, and I will administer it before. Brian, go ahead, John.
I guess it's just a point of interest and to confirm this, that we didn't review this in Finance HR as a matter of time, so this is being first addressed to this board as a primary format. So with that being said, is there anything from your perspective, Brian, that you want called out concerning the budget that you normally have called out very committee?
I think if you, if you burn the topic summary sheet, I've highlighted the big highlights, big changes. So we had the five and a half additional FTEs for the special education needs. We have the three additional custodians that we accrued at prior meeting. That's all built in here, and then the salary increases that are coming up that a later agenda that are also built into this, that increases, and then a one percent increase to the entire, to the salary statement as well. The vast majority of the revenue and expenditure increases was related to BVA. The BVA enrollment has skyrocketed this year due to COVID. And so there was a lot of enrollment into the district that generated that additional revenue. And then, of course, all those students generated additional expenditure. We had a higher salary stamp for BVA. All of the technology that comes along with that for each of those students to receive their education and then also their curricular materials. The other thing I do want to point out, the levy is increasing over last year, partly due to a decrease in the estimated amount of general equalization aid that we were expecting. At the annual meeting, we had projected, which are flat levy for this year. The actual percentage is, what was it, quarter point two-six, I think it was? And so there's a couple, two major reasons for that. One, at the annual meeting, we were projecting a revenue limit using ninety-seven hundred dollars per student based on our initial approach to build a budget by assuming a revenue limit freeze until we do what happened with the pandemic back in COVID for the 2021 school year. This new levy is based on ten thousand dollars per student. And so that increased the revenue limit. And then on top of that, we had a decrease in the estimated aid amount, which then increases the portion of revenue limit that would be applicable to the property tax. So there's two main reasons for that increase. Fund balance is going to be, if we hold for this budget, fund balance is projected to be fourteen point four percent of that fund ten and twenty-seven expenditures. And if you recall, we just redid our fund balance policy to state that it would be a minimum of fourteen percent of that fund ten and twenty-seven expenditures. We ended the year with fifteen point five percent. And we will end this year, based on this budget, at fourteen point four percent. And there's no actual dollar reduction in the fund balance. The reason that percentage is going down is because there's a lot more expenses this year. And so the fund balance would actually stay flat based on this budget. We don't put anything into it. And so you've got a same amount of fund balance based on a much larger amount of expenditures. We anticipate that the expenditures will come back down again next year after we get past all this COVID radiation environment. Any questions on any of that?
Maybe follow up, Sean?
I would like to just thank you for your work. If you look at the topic summary sheet, there are multiple moving parts of ups and downs. And we'll be voting later on on some salary increases that were covered pending on this. And we've accomplished two things that are very important. One is we balance the budget, which is one of our policies. And two, we maintain the fourteen percent fund balance, which is another one of our policies. So we can say in the event that both of our financial, main financial policies are in compliance when we make future decisions. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other board members with questions? We'll give Mr. Dasher a second. Hearing none, we give a motion. But this time, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is approval of the Head Start Annual Report. We have the annual report provided by Jill Seaman. There is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the Head Start Annual Report as presented to the board.
Motion by John Smith, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Do we have any questions on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Training for the Board of Education. Being the Board of Education is a governing body for the Head Start program. We each, we each receive training specific to our roles as governing body members. And we need to be able to articulate all the training and help us make decisions on the Head Start program. Additional training will be done also through the Board of Education reports or future special agenda items. Attached was our training folder and our government's training agreements. Any questions we were to have asked Jill Seaman accordingly? If you have any additional questions, we would have some time right now. If you want to clarify something, go ahead, Kendra.
Yeah, because for this, the contract we're supposed to sign, is there a way that we can sign it digitally off of our tablet? Because I'm not quite sure how to do that. If somebody can show me afterwards.
Okay.
Or do we have to have a paper copy?
I will verify that. I didn't see also that we were supposed to return that by a certain date on there to Tammy. So I will see if we can do a electronic signature or not on that, or if we need to sign and scan it or drop it off at Central Office next week.
All right, thank you.
So I'll have to get you that, too. We have all the documents, if they do have that on file. I'll make sure. Any other questions in regards to the Head Start Training for the board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the 2020-2021 Teacher Support Staff Handbook Adjustment with an attached topic summary sheet from our Human Resources Director, Eddie Lenz. With a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have that motion this evening? Johnson?
I recommend a motion to approve the revisions to both teacher and support staff handbooks for the 2020-2021 school year with the substitute pay rate to be effective November second.
Motion by John Smith, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra, you're stating. So noted. Motion carries. Next item would be the update on the statewide face covering mandate, possible action. With attached topic summary sheet from Eddie Lenz. A recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have that motion this evening? Nubs?
Finance HR Committee recommends a motion to approve the extension of the MAPS requirement that all students and staff for face covering per the guidelines established by the government's orders through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this motion? Kendra, go ahead.
I have a question from people that have exemptions for the wearing of the mask or face covering. It did say on the note something about HR had to approve it. Are the same exemptions in place throughout the year? Or do they need to be reviewed at all?
Yes, all the, there we go. All the exemption things that started the year will continue down the, on the same path. The goal was to again put it December thirty, sorry, January thirty-first, just because we have a board meeting before then. And that would carry this to that board meeting, but January will stay in place. But there's some kind of exception or whatever that changes our circumstances.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Mr. Lenz, are we at the microphone? All right. Thank you, Eddie. We will call that motion to a vote. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. There was a second motion on this topic recommended from the Finance HR Committee. Do we have that this evening? John Smith, please?
I recommend a motion to approve a review of this requirement statewide face covering mandate in January of 2021.
Motion by John Smith, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is a request from Maple Grove Charter School Governance Board for something on payment. There was an attached topic summary sheet provided by our Director of Finance, Brian Dasher, and a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I recommend a motion granting the request of Maple Grove Governance Board to provide an additional twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-eight cents in revenue allocation for the 2020-2021 year to compensate for the difference in salaries between the teachers who were transferring 2018 to 2021.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any questions or discussion on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any abstentions this evening? Motion carries on a voice vote unanimously. Next item on our agenda this evening is review of the proposed budget development calendar with the topic summary sheet provided from our Director of Finance, Brian Dasher, and a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to adopt an preliminary budget development calendar.
Motion by John Smith, do we have a second? Kendra? Any question or discussion on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is proposal to grant salary increases for the compensation plans for regular employed staff. Which includes custodians, aides, teachers, secretaries, technology staff, and administration with the attached topic summary sheet of Brian Dasher. There's a recommended motion from our Finance HR Committee. Do we have that motion this evening? Maria?
I'd grant salary increases for regular employed staff for July, June, and July, June, twenty twenty.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second? Second by John? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Just for clarification, Mr. Smith, as you mentioned earlier, that was already in the projections and in the charts provided to Finance HR through Mr. Dasher.
Yeah, that's correct, both five hundred and ninety thousand, I believe it was.
So that does not affect anything.
That's part of the calculation that creates the balanced budget, so we're making a balanced budget decision here.
Correct. Sorry. Need to restate that, thank you. Any other questions on this motion or topic? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra, this is standing. Vote passes. We will go on to our next topic, which is full-time virtual learning option, both the middle school and the high school. There's an attached topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray, which is informational only. Put that on there to make sure if there was any questions that people would like to ask and discuss this evening, if they had the opportunity, if board members to do so. So we have both Ryan and Shannon available. Any board members have questions after reviewing the topic summary sheet? Anything you would like to add on that topic, Dr. Sam, like, which is pretty self-explanatory and well-written right now? If they had anything, please go ahead at this time.
Essentially, what we're doing is we're acknowledging that we, there's been another option added to our menu of items. And so parents have the option of enrolling their children into BVA to start the school year. And in middle school, high school, they could have had an EB schedule, or they could have chosen to attend five days per week in physical attendance. And so we're finding that there are students that are choosing none of the options and receiving virtual instruction from our teachers who are instructing students face-to-face, and they are virtual practically one hundred percent of the time. And so we decided that we were going to provide them with instruction. And it's just an acknowledgement of the instruction that our teachers are providing.
All right. Didn't see any other hands up, so I believe everyone is fine on the understanding of that topic at this time. So we'll move on on the agenda to our memorandum of understanding, or MOU, between Merrill area public schools and Big Brothers Big Sisters, part of central Wisconsin. Attached MOU or memorandum of understanding with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for her area public schools and Big Brothers Big Sisters of North Central Wisconsin for the 2020-2021 school year.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any questions or discussion on that motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is COVID-related attendance and consideration of district-wide relief. This item has been placed on the agenda for a timely discussion of possible recommendation coming to the board from administration. And we did have a topic summary sheet attached. This time, I'd like to turn that over to Dr. Sam.
Thanks, Kevin. The topic summary is lengthy, and I wanted to be as comprehensive as possible to revert, provide to revert, provide first the overview of, uh, the, the workload and how our staff are working to meet the needs of all students. I also provided current data. The link reflects to, and if you're able to, uh, it might be helpful to open that link. It reflects to the hard work that Karen Baker has been conducting and tracking our absences for, uh, students or staff testing positive and those students or staff that are quarantined due to contact tracing. Uh, if you'll notice on her report, I kind of provided a little bit of a tutorial on how to read it. And lines forty-one and forty-two on that report are significant. For example, on line forty-one, and I believe that date was over the weekend on, on a Sunday, uh, Karen has been tracking on Saturdays and Sundays, and, and so you'll see that throughout her, uh, her data as well. So the best way to read line forty-one or any of this report is that on ten twenty-five, twenty twenty, Jefferson, for example, one student tested positive, which resulted in twenty students required to quarantine based on contact with that one student. Two staff were required to quarantine based on contact, bringing the total number of staff and students quarantined to twenty-three based on that one student testing positive. So by looking at those numbers, that's the best way to read it. Also, on that same date, we had one staff tested positive, which resulted in twenty students being required to quarantine based on contact with that one staff. Zero staff members were required to quarantine based on contact with that staff member, bringing the total of students and staff quarantined to twenty-one based on the one staff testing positive. And so, what this report does not include is it does not include, include any siblings that are required to quarantine. And it does not, uh, include anybody who is quarantined with, as an entire household. So our numbers are not quite the tip of the iceberg, but close, and our numbers are drastically rising. So I provided in my topic summary, those are the events that led to the temporary closure of Jefferson over the last, this past weekend. Um, just because of the numbers, and we've always maintained a threshold, not by number, but Karen said it best, our threshold is when we don't have enough teachers to teach and students to instruct. And so you can see the data that we collected justified the reason for the temporary closure, and hopefully we can reopen those doors on November ninth, although we are tracking COVID data on a daily basis. And then we're back to the result of where all of our teachers are at currently. And, uh, the impact of not having time to prepare, collaborate, properly plan for quality instruction. We all agree that face-to-face instruction is the preferred mode of delivery from many perspectives. Having students and staff physically present increases student achievement and success academically and socially, emotionally. Socially and emotionally. Why we need time, I've elaborated as much as possible for those things that we're not able to do and how they can benefit students, quality instruction, and also our teachers are being prepared and collaborating in order to meet the standards and the high expectations that we set for ourselves for this year for student achievement. At this point, the potential solution at this time, we currently have seven days for inclement weather built into our calendar. What I'm recommending is using four of those seven days built into the calendar for purposes of teacher workdays without student instruction. I gave you an example of those days that is certainly worthy of discussion because November second is coming up next Monday. But we also understand too that, uh, this is, this is something that requires timely attention uh, because of the nature of our, of our teachers' work and the lack of planning to provide quality instruction. So those days can certainly be modified, but we also have the ability to make everybody aware, uh, as early as tomorrow morning that November second, uh, would be a day for most students if that's what the board decides. Uh, other considerations, the teachers and support staff have, have the option of working virtually or in the building during those teacher workdays. And it's very important for me to state that all inclement weather days moving forward will be virtual instruction days. And so, having the seven days built into a calendar that was devised and proposed to the board and the board approved was well before COVID. I had, I don't write calendars and I don't assemble groups and, and survey staff on their wishes and needs with a pandemic in mind, and I, and this is certainly the case in, in this instance. The other options that I considered but rejected, half-days for instruction and half-days for planning, that was rejected based on transportation. We do not have the capability of transporting students for half-days considering the schedules of Pine River School for Young Learners and the parochial sites. A district-wide shutdown for a period of time was also considered and rejected. Our COVID positive and quarantine numbers at most buildings do not indicate at this time the need for a district-wide shutdown. And then teacher workdays on workdays other than Monday. For example, having a Tuesday or a Wednesday or a Thursday or a Friday off for teacher planning, not possible due to buses transporting students at Pine River School for Young Learners on those days. Students already do not attend Pine River School for Young Learners on Mondays, which allows for Mondays to be our best option. It's a lot of information, I know it's a lot of consideration, uh, and so I'm, I'm open for ideas, discussion, and questions at this time as well.
Maria?
I could jail a lot that's on into the same time to talk right now. Um, one question that comes tonight, uh, with regards to the four teacher workdays, how would that affect our parochial, with regard to blessing, meaning their issues or inspirations? Do you know how that affects them?
They would still be transported. If this were approved tonight, I would let the parochials know that this is our plan moving forward and see if they would like to align with that plan or if they're going to continue as, as usual.
So they would have that, they would have the action as a teacher?
Yes.
They would have the action as opposed to the school calendar for the year? Maybe follow the MAPS calendar? This is, you know, just an exception to the rule because of the circumstances.
Correct. They don't, they do not have to follow suit with our calendar, and their students will still be transported if that's their wishes to have school on those days.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in, in this proposal, we're using four of the seven days, and you've also noted that the inclement weather days moving forward will be virtual. Does that mean that there's a plan for after, in the proposed data is December seventh? Is there a plan then for the remainder days for the teachers into the next year?
There is not a plan as of now, uh, but every, every level, our elementary, our middle school, our high school has plans, uh, for in the event of having to shut down and go one hundred percent virtual. So we, we are prepared to go virtual. But as far as the plan for utilizing the, the remainder, three of those seven days, no, we have no plan for that yet.
I mean, um, let me clarify, I mean relief for the teachers in the next year. If you were going to do this for this period, is there going to be something available for them after December?
We would still have three days. Correct. And, and I don't, I just, my mind thinks of next year is twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, right, but next, the next calendar year, gotcha. And, uh, and certainly what the pandemic has done too is, is allowed us to build a much more thoughtful calendar for next year. Um, front-loading PD days is nice. Um, continued student instruction is also great, but there also needs to be a, a day and opportune moments in the calendar in order for us to regroup, plan, and continue with quality instruction. And so I think that everything that we've learned this year is going to go into next year for a, a, a quality calendar. I also see that there's really not going to be any reason to build in any more school days, uh, any more inclement weather days into a calendar since we do have the virtual option, uh, for instruction. So, uh, this has really been a learning year for future calendars.
Any follow-up questions, Kendra?
I, I, I don't, maybe, I mean, I'm not understanding. I'm sorry. I mean, like, in December, the school year is still going to go January, February, March. So is there some, is those three days, can the teachers, is that the plan for those months for the teachers?
Yes, we did, we have not, we're not considering it at this point. We're, we're getting through the next two months until Christmas, actually, and then, and then I will open the floor for ideas and anything else afterwards so that we can use those other three days, actually. Yes, we're just not to that point yet, right?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kendra. Uh, there's others, follow-up by John?
Yeah, so, and we gotta do something. Two days ago, I was in the, that meeting with you, I think it was Tuesday. Um, we had administrative retreat, board retreat there, I can't remember what it was called. Um, and our, our teachers and our administrators are hurting right now. They're stressed out, the anxiety levels are high. And yeah, we want teacher, or student achievement, um, you know, to be the number one factor. But if we don't have our administrators and our teachers at top-notch, healthy or, you know, nine step wise, it's not going to be any good at all. Um, and so I, I think that building in those four days is great. I would, I think we need to plan further for that and use those three additional days going into January or whenever we come back from our holiday break. Because I don't think this COVID stuff is going to go big anytime soon, unfortunately. I wish it would because everything is just, it's a hot mess. It's a hot mess every year, and I'm just going to use those words because it's just really crazy. And I feel for everybody. And I know our staff, and everybody is working really, really hard to make this work. And this is a very tough time for our district. I think probably one of the toughest times since I've lived here that we've had to go through. And so, I was almost going to say, let's give them a week of vacation off because I really think they need it. But then again, then our kids are going to suffer from that mistimed instruction. Um, and so I, that, I just wanted to say that. But the next thing is, um, what Mrs. Novich stated is that if we do do this, I mean, it's, it's an okay plan for them, and they just need a little bit more advanced plan. Um, so, you know, I think this is a good start, but I think we just need to think about after the holiday break of what we're going to do to result, to, you know, keep our teachers going and our administrators going. You know, I guess, um, I don't know what else to say because there's no real true answers to any of this that we're experiencing right now because of the world we're living in, but, um, I do know we need to do something, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
Any response to that, Dr. Sample? Did you, you managed to end this, end this question already here?
No, thank you. And, uh, and that's the notes I'm making right now is with those three remaining days, make sure we use those wisely and, and, and plan accordingly, uh, depending on board action.
Yeah, boy, now I signed all these stupid days, and I was like, oh, boy, I really did a bad, bad job. They do have one more follow-up question quickly. For the inclement, um, weather days, so when we have a snow day, we can, we're going to turn those right into virtual instructional days, and so then we wouldn't be missing school at all then?
That's correct. That's correct. Open the iPads, open your laptops, and, and that will be a virtual instruction day.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and this, uh, this is John Smith. Go ahead, John, go for it.
Thank you. Uh, concerning instructional minutes, has DPI made any declarations so far this year on maintaining the course on how many is required or?
The instructional minutes are, are still amending. However, and I, I say that with a however, there are also, uh, the waivers for instructional minutes just like this past spring. We're not to the point, we would only be to the point of seeking a waiver for instructional minutes if we needed more than those three days. But with using the four and even using all seven of those days built in, those are the days we have left. And then after that point, we're going to dip below the instructional minutes required for the secondary level especially.
Yeah, that was kind of my thought process with, um, you know, we do have this seven days built into the calendar for snow, and now snow is no longer a thing. So, you know, they're already budgeted and they can be used. Um, the complexity comes in is the next three will buy you only, um, six weeks worth of the same, um, pattern that you have here. Uh, so if it's going to continue throughout the remainder of the year, then, um, would it operate just like snow days do? When you get to your eighth snow day, you start juggling the calendar by either adding time to the end of the school year or you take away an instructional day or, I always thought, M.I.S., but I think it's M.S. I'm sorry.
That's what we're doing.
One of those two. Is it, is it not, would it not just be, if the commitment was that this is how we want to move forward, every two weeks, having Monday be a workday, um, you would apply the same logic if you needed more as you would, more snow days?
Correct. That could be remedied by adding days to the end of the calendar, or it could be remedied through a waiver of instructional minutes being submitted to DPI. So there's, there's two remedies if we get to the end of our seven days. Uh, that would be a shame that at the end of January, we have no more days to give up and now it's our next move. And so both of those moves are very viable to add days to the end of the calendar or to submit a, a waiver for instructional minutes.
Yeah, I guess that's something I would throw my opinion on the record on that is, you know, we sat here for, we sat here for four years and heard how important every minute is and how important the time is to instruct and the scores and the outcomes. This year is unprecedentedly difficult for the student. And so, when it comes to wavering and cutting minutes at the end, um, you have to be very cognizant that you're taking that from student education. Um, so we have, we have to keep that at the forefront of our minds because that's what we've talked about, um, sitting here every night up until this point. One other question I have as far as, um, the high school had a late start Wednesday, which used snow time or the budgeted snow time. So is, does that then end, and then the Monday workday every other week take precedence? And that's what they'll follow in everybody else?
The seven days that we have remaining takes into account the late start Wednesdays. We were up to ten point, almost ten and a half, uh, almost ten and three-quarters days of instructional minute. With the high school taking the late start Wednesdays for collaboration time and DLC time, uh, that leaves us with a balance of seven. So those late start Wednesdays may continue. Um, the middle school minutes are fine with adding the additional instruction on to both sides of their day, and that was added on top of what we added the prior year. The middle school's a little bit easier to add minutes to because they are helped for transportation as well. And so transportation was not an issue getting those students there a little earlier, picking them up a little later.
Okay, so the minimum amount of days is based, it makes sense. But we, we, we fashion our minimums based off of high school schedule. But because the middle school and the elementary school are already way beyond the minutes that's required from DPI, and that's a true statement?
Especially the elementary, the ele, and I, I'm not DPI, and so I don't know why the, uh, required, the mandated instructional minutes were less for elementary, more for high school. I, I don't know, but our elementary is way above and beyond the mandated minutes.
And then, uh, lastly, and just a point of clarification, did you say that November second was a target? But you were willing to consider a different date to initiate this? And being that it's two business days to prepare in regards to family? Or is the district prepared to, to do that by next Monday? We're, I have an opinion, I just, I kind of just want to know, like, are we approving next Monday? Or are we approving the ninth? Because the ninth is also the day you plan to reopen Jefferson.
That's, that's exactly what I was looking for, and the, the second fit nicely with the schedule. We can get the word out, I, I don't know what the burden is going to be on our community, on our parents to, uh, announce tomorrow that next Monday is, uh, you know, don't send your students to school. And so that's what I'm weighing as well. Uh, if it were, if it were on the ninth, uh, that would give us enough notice, but that is the target date at this point at least to reopen the Jefferson doors. And so we wouldn't have enough time though to, to make them learn.
I don't have a, a major opinion, but I just imagine a lot of people do. Does that make sense? Um, and that should be considered. Obviously, the whole reopen date of, of Jefferson can be the tenth. You know, what's the difference? Now it's Tuesday instead of Monday, um, as far as returning kids to school part. But I just put that out there that, uh, we have to take into consideration simply arranging for... for childcare for the families, which of course in Jefferson's case happened on a Sunday. So I guess I balanced that in my thought process to add zero because of necessity.
And this one, we have a little bit more control over absolutely. And so I am not opposed at all to proposing November 9th, 16th, 30th, and then December 7th. I do want to be extremely sensitive to our, our family. This was a calendar that they've known about for quite some time. Obviously pandemic and COVID is presenting some information otherwise that we have to react to and we can't be proactive with. But one thing I also want to emphasize, and this is also in my report, this is in no way to be confused for with time off. This is time well spent. So because we do value our instructional minutes and we want those instructional minutes to be as valid as possible and as potential for, and it is effective for our partners.
Sounds good. And then just a housekeeping issue that, that you have a suggested motion that specifies the dates. If we make a motion this evening, that we let them modify it so that it's just every other Monday?
If you want to go with November 2nd, every other Monday beginning November 2nd or?
Say we can make the motion to approve to add four teacher workdays for planning on an every other Monday schedule, beginning at the discretion of the administrator to the existing 2021's school calendar.
If we went every other Monday, the only potential issue we have is that Monday, the 23rd would be a teacher workday, no students. Students will come back for the 24th only. And then, and then it's Thanksgiving vacation for them. So it'd be a one day instructional day for our students.
So we'll just say Mondays at your discretion?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Any other follow up questions, John?
Oh, thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Otherwise, I would ask for a motion at this time. Senator, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Um, no, just one moment please. We're just, good.
Go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion to approve adding four teacher workdays for planning on Mondays to the existing 20, 20, 2021 school calendar at the discretion of the district administrator.
Motion by John Smith. Do we have a second? Second by Brett Waller. Any questions or discussion on this motion? There are none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice call. Our next item on our agenda this evening is the master facilities plan. This is a standing agenda item. There are some updates, highlights and discussions. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Sample at this time.
Thanks Kevin. Including the topic summary report is the, are the minutes from both of the first two ad hoc committee meeting minutes in which we were talking about which grade levels will be at Washington and which ones will be at Cape and which ones are more suited, not only from a cost perspective, but from, certainly from a student perspective, the modifications that are going to be required to make those facilities the best they can be for the, for the respective grade levels that I will choose with input to be at those two locations. So you see the minutes from both of those meetings. We had our third and final ad hoc committee meeting last night. Obviously not in time to include the minutes, but those minutes will be going to facilities and to the full board as well. You can see that the consolidation plan is still estimated to allow the district to reallocate approximately $787,106. What Dale and I are working on now, because it's coming up at the November board meeting, is to, we will be prepared at that time. I will recommend the, the grades that will be at each one of those two sites. We are also building into the budget development calendar because everything fits hand in hand as far as the timeline and as timing goes, our next steps with respect to the budget development calendar, on what we're going to do with facilities, staffing, what we're going to need for any one of those buildings as well as costs. In order for the board to understand the decision-making process, I will not only recommend a decision for which grades will be at Washington, which ones will be at Cape with those costs, but we will also flip it and, and switch the grades. And if it were decided the other way, we would provide associated costs with that as well. I can't tell you right now, it is coming down to capacity needs and future needs, potential future needs. And so I'm very confident that we're going to have a rather extensive report with hosting at the November board meeting with a recommendation of moving forward because there's a lot of things that have to happen beginning with that report. And so I'm very thankful for those ad hoc committee members that participated because this starts kind of a chain reaction of events that's going to be made for a very busy school year.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Any board members have questions on this topic from Dr. Sample? John, go ahead.
I just a comment that I did find it interesting when looking at the Third Friday comment. I guess I've never seen it stacked that way, so I'll thank Mr. Baker for that. You know, was that, uh, 320 kids pre-COVID down in the past five years, which is the occupancy of a entire school. And then of course we have our COVID drop of 100 more, which we don't know where that's going to go. But in the past six years, there's, you know, 400 kids that no longer and they're occupied a desk in the district. So it's pretty eye opening figure.
It is. And the numbers that Karen provided, Dale and I were relished just to get our hands on her Third Friday count so that we can put it in perspective for the ad hoc committee. And in reality, we've been working with projected numbers all this time. And the projected numbers for enrollment that Brian Dasher provided, there was not a lot of difference between the actual and the projected. And, and considering pre-COVID, yes, it's, it's an understatement to say we're a declining enrollment district.
Anything else to add, Mr. Smith? Any other board members have? Question or discussion points on the master facilities plan and the update this evening? I'd just like to also take the opportunity to thank Dr. Sample and the ad hoc committee and everyone who provided data, such as Mr. Baker, Mr. Dash, Linda, Dale, Eddie, everyone coming together to have this discussion and all these RTC discussions. And it is appreciated by myself and the board. So thank you for providing that data. That was informational only. There aren't motions on that. So just be prepared for more informations to follow on upcoming committees as well as in our November board pack. That being said, I'm going to ask if anyone would like to pull anything from our consent agenda this evening? Otherwise, I will ask for the motion this evening. Maria?
I recommend the motion of the consent agenda is add a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes a second grading approval policy to be determined remote work policy minutes of the September 23, 2020 and October 15, 2020 meetings, claims, vouchers and receipts totaling $10,141,783.74. Personnel report is presented in donations totaling $1,693.33.
Do we have a motion by Maria? Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Linda?
I have a comment from October 15.
So noted, any other? Maria?
I have a statement from October 15.
Thank you, Maria. Any other abstentions?
Uh, this is Jeremy Allen, some state.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Motion carries with noted abstentions. For future meetings, just as a reminder, Dr. Mike Stopp or email to my cell for Dr. Sample. That goes also for our committee chairs or any topics that you'd like on the committee agenda. Please work with our, our contacts for each of those committees. Know what our timelines are and their expectations concerning the general draft to Tammy. Thank you for your consideration on that. Our next item on there is our board decision financial impact summary. Turn that back into some work on the finance, HR committees to review that. That was going to be a dashboard or a spreadsheet. Let's see what we're going to look at in the future. We had other pressing issues so that it's not made a recent or upcoming agenda. So we'll just make note of that and review that. In the meantime, it is an attached document. We'll go past board members' request, or board members' request in the past. Thank you. Next item is a reminder of the radio schedule tomorrow morning. Thursday, October 29th, Dr. Sample and I will be on Blue J, 7:30 radio station at 8:15 PM on Community Scan. Future meetings, there's a safety committee meeting Monday, November 2nd at 12:30 in the boardroom. Facilities committee meeting weeks, uh, Wednesday, November 4th, 3:30 in the boardroom. Followed directly by the finance, HR committee on November 4th, 12:30 PM in the boardroom. Maple Grove Governance Board, next meeting is Monday, November 9th at 6:00 PM in a virtual meeting. Head Start Policy Council meets on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 at 5:30 PM by a virtual meeting at 12. Our CTP, our curriculum technology services committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, 12:30 PM in the boardroom. Next regular scheduled board meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, 5:30 PM here in the Merrill High School auditorium and remotely virtual as well. At this time, we have contemplated motion to adjourn to executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, front one, front C. Considering employment promotion compensation performance evaluation data by any public employee of whose governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility. And after considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for, per N, applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data involved in such problems or investigation, 118.125, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records, personal histories that discuss in public like they have substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the person to discuss. First purpose of the closed session is for consideration of possible actions regarding applications or participation in early college credit and early college now program and to discuss collection of liquidated damages for two former staff members. I have that motion this evening. So moved by John Smith. Do we have a second? Second by Linda Jungling. Do I have a roll call please on that, Laura?
Aye.
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 Kendra Ossie.
Aye.
Kevin Lloyd.
Aye.
Jeremy Redd.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries at 7:00 PM. We will take a brief recess and get back in closed session with possible actions to follow and open the session. Thank you, everybody. 47:00 PM, we are ready for meeting, open session. Now we're asked, all board members, if we have any motions coming out of closed session this evening? Kendra?
I motion to approve a 39 early college credit and start college now courses as asked presented in closed session.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Melis. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice call. I'll ask again, do we have any additional motions coming out of closed session? John?
I motion to clarify our intentions from the September meeting to include the release of this on faults from her teaching contract and pursue the liquidated damages from her 2020, 2021 teacher contract.
Motion by John, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. Second by Linda. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice call. Do we have any additional motions from closed session? Mr. Smith?
I motion to pursue the liquidated damages from Jacob Schallow's 2020, 2021 teacher contract.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Linda. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? I believe that's our final motion with the exception of our favorite motion. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Linda, second.
Aye.
Third by Jeremy. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at 7:49 PM signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance this evening.